Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Messina.
I have a call. I need approval for February 11th, 2021.
Second.
Changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? No pose? Okay, one thing on the agenda today. Reporting recommendation approval for intergovernment agreement from Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the flood hazard mitigation project grant. That will be a motion. Anyone have any questions? You going to present anything, Jeff, on that?
Excuse me.
Anyone?
Patrick.
Gentlemen here.
Thanks for having me tonight. So this was a grant through Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They announced it back in June of 2020. Staff had a list of properties along the, within the flood zone that had showed previous interest in a similar program. We had mailed letters seeking out interest in each participating in the program. We got the five properties that are included in here responding back as interested properties. So we submitted the grant with those in mind during the, you know, approval of the process and talking to IDNR. They had saw that there was one more property that was a repetitive loss. So they suggested reaching out to that person as well and including them in. So they allowed that. It's as an alternate. So in the event that one of these properties do back out, that property could participate. So cost estimates were gathered along with demolition costs, acquisitions, and applied for. We got that approval. So in the event that market fluctuations change or appraisals come back differently, IDNR is willing to seek out if it's a little bit more, see if there's available funds from savings of other projects within the state. Once these properties are, you know, have agreed upon appraisals and the property owners go through with taking the offer, then the city does assume responsibility, demolish the property, and assume ownership and maintain the property in natural state after that.
I, and questions? Let's start with.
Yeah, thank you. So now that the money is officially approved, when do we think we'll get letters out to people? And what's the next step? We're gonna go appraise the five people that signed up to be part of the?
Right, so next I've, you know, seeking proposals from appraisers to, you know, solicit one. The state has some regulations on, you know, getting three proposals from them. So we will reach out to each of the property owners, go through the appraisal process. The offers are made based off the appraisal for state conditions. Now, the property owner has two options. They can say, "I'm not interested," but thank you. Or they could get an independent appraiser on their own. If the state approves that appraiser, then they can have it done by their own means. And if the change occurs, if it's up, the state will consider that.
Okay. Thank, well, one more.
Go ahead.
So do we have a timeframe for when that would get out to the residents?
It will be, you know, we'll get proposals back by the middle of, end of next week. And then we can start that process.
Okay.
This, this IDA does have to get signed by Illinois Department of Natural Resources as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, you have a question?
I'm good.
Okay, I only have one question. So if another one, say two of them drop out, is there another? Do we have an ongoing list of who we can add in?
There is a list, and there's one other property owner that has stated after the fact that they.
The 426 Grove.
No, there's even another one after that, that IDNR is actually, they have the info. But this one came up. They saw, they called way after the fact. I think we had already heard that we were getting approval on this funding. And the person that I worked with at the state suggested that we just give the property owner info or parameters of that property to them. They can start the, they have to go through an environmental review, historic analysis, all that. So in the event that exactly two properties do back out, this other participant could come in.
Okay. There's a motion, there's a second. Any other questions? All in favor? Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Okay. Items, any other items for the future you guys want to add on? If not, I'm gonna read off the ones. Items to consider future meeting, new public works building, Veterans Memorial Landscaping, April. Stormwater War II and III contract award in April. Street resurfacing program contract award, May 13. Any other things? Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
Well, it's not another thing, but it is a question if somebody can answer it. What's the Veterans Memorial Landscaping about? I thought we approved that already.
This is for the award of the actual construction for that. So we award the design.
Okay. Anything else? I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order. Let the minute taker reflect that the same members are present. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the meeting minutes from February 25th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, corrections, changes? There being none, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Next, report and recommendation COVID-19 local stimulus extensions, 2021. Mr. Wilson, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we have a number of items, five to be exact, that the council had implemented last year as COVID relief slash COVID stimulus for the businesses and/or residents. A lot of those were set to expire. The liquor license one expired, I believe it was, what, the end of October, early November, with the outdoor dining. Some of the other things such as the water bills, dial-a-ride, those were set to expire at the end of February. So we're coming back to you this evening to see if we'd like to extend those, cease those programs, or, you know, get further guidance on how you want to proceed with those. The first one on the list is the liquor license. So this would actually be the outdoor dining liquor license that was implemented last year. And that again, I believe ceased with the termination of the outdoor dining itself. It's my understanding that the code provision ceased at that point. So if we wanted to do that again this year, we have to come back with another ordinance authorizing that. And then the police department did put in, they said they would like the additional restriction of the outdoor music entertainment after 9:00 PM. Otherwise, the language would be the same as it was last year. So that's the first of the five items that we're looking on direction for this evening.
Would you like direction singly or collectively?
Singly would be preferred.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve moving forward.
I'll second, I have a question.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So my question is, the liquor license, outdoor liquor license? Didn't we waive all liquor licenses for everyone last?
Mr. Wilson?
No, this is different.
Yeah, so the renewal fee of the liquor licenses, that's another item on here. I hope there was a fee for, was there a fee for the outdoor one?
A lot of it was outside.
So there was not a fee last year for the, this outdoor liquor license?
Okay.
Mayor Police, you had a question?
Yes. So regarding the outdoor, so I had one of the businesses send us a photo. I think I forwarded to staff, but they wanted to, I don't know, buy or lease like a container truck that opens up, looks like a bar area, right? They gotta. But if I'm understood and standing correctly, that was a, that becomes a change in codes and not same to this, right? So this, what we're looking at right now is basically letting them do the same things we did last year, nothing more because the other stuff is code change.
Correct. Pat, on?
Yeah, that's the liquor license component as, as Mr. Wilson indicated, he's kind of divided up. So that would be part of the liquor license because currently you can't serve it outdoors. So this would take the, the conditions that we imposed or that we allowed last year, implement that into our, into our code, so it would be part of it. The other one with respect, I think that'll come up under the dining, 50/50 outdoor dining, and, and what would be allowed in that. And I can address that when we get to that item.
Mayor Police, you had a follow up?
Yeah, a follow up. So outdoor alcohol, but some of the restaurants have like so-called patios or sidewalks where they have a few tables. That's allowed per code going into the parking lot. That's when it changes, correct? I just want to make sure I understand everything.
Correct. There are some, if they already had a facility where they could do it, they could have it. The service was allowed out there. If they didn't, they would have, they wouldn't, it would be prohibited. And by the action that you're recommending this evening, that would allow for alcohol, alcoholic beverages to be served in a parking lot area, provided there's, you know, we put restrictions in there to divide it between the parking, you know, the vehicles and the vestry and, and everything for the safety. And if there are any tents or anything, they had to be secured. They had to be, and any tables, chairs, all had to be secured as well. So that would allow for those who don't now currently have it under their liquor license would give them the ability to have service in the outdoors.
Mr. Murmurs, did you have a follow up?
Well, just for clarity, so we're all on the same page. Staff is under the assumption that if the council approves the, the outdoor liquor service, that it would be, the rules would be waived just for this summer season, not affecting permanent code changes. So anything anybody would decide to do, just because it's allowed this summer, does not mean that that grants you a license to then go ahead and do that in perpetuity.
Correct, absolutely correct. Mr. Wilson?
And I think the item the mayor brought up, I talked to Mr. Cage. I think that's coming up at a future meeting in a couple of weeks or a month, the.
Correct. We've been going back and forth with Mr. Bond, Mr. Cage. It's a little more complicated with a couple of different things. Pulling in the building department issues, pulling in safety issues, pulling in licensing issues, and that too. So it's a whole separate piece to the puzzle. Alderman Sorrentino.
Thank you. Were there additional dollars to extend the liquor license to the outdoors? Or was it just the same license fee? Just the permission to take it outside?
Just the permission. Yeah, it's just the permission.
Okay. So, okay. Alderman Sizmarsky, you have a question?
We gonna have a sunset clause on this again? Or are we gonna wait to see what the state does as far as if they, what happens? What happens if the state says it's fine to open up? Are we gonna allow them to stay in the parking lots till the end of the year? Or for a certain time?
Mr. Bond, do you want to take that?
Yeah, we would do what you did last year. You'd have a sunset clause. And I think it was October, we did one extension because we had some nice weather. But regardless, if the governor were to extend or change the conditions, that wouldn't apply because we're really doing it because of the restrictions for indoors. If he says you can go back in, we would still extend this through. Because there's gonna be some people go to some expense to put a outdoor dining. So this would go through the, the duration. So license would be until October 31st was the date that we had last time. So it would sunset as of November 1st.
So regardless, so regardless of the state says they're open, you can be inside, whatever. So they get to keep it till the 31st?
Exactly. I don't think you want to, you know, have somebody go to that, the effort of reorganizing their operation and go to some expense and then say, "Well, we're back in, so for it all out." So, yeah, it would have, it would stay regardless of any changes of the, of the governor's. Obviously, if we go to a complete shutdown, you know, that's a, an order of the government, and that changes everything, and it would rescind this. But it's, it will have a sunset clause for October 31st.
Thanks.
Alderman Sorrentino, you had a follow up?
Maybe it's my own personal confusion. Jeff just stood up there and said it's for this summer. Was this, now we're talking October? I'm a little confused here.
Mr. Murmurs, you want to?
What I meant was this summer season extending into the fall.
Okay.
As with everything, we're kind of viewing the spring and summer of 2021 as a kind of start to get, you know, return back to normal. We know it's gonna be fluctuating all summer, and it's gonna be a task and a journey. But I, I meant the season.
Makes it easier, we can call it outdoor clause.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Mr. Wilson, you want to take the next?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So following up on that, may recall, last spring, we did the 50/50 cost share with the residents for applicable costs to establish outdoor dining, you know, in the parking lots, the tents, table rentals, things of that nature. So it's really a two-part question. One is, do we want to offer that again this year? And so that's question one. And then I guess depending on the answer to question one, I'll ask question two, so.
Alderman Sizmarsky, you have a question?
Do we know if park districts are gonna open at all this year? Or will they be able to rent tables again? Or are we gonna talk to Mr.?
I do know that they intend to open their pool. I don't know about other facilities, but they are intending to open their pool.
If we get some feedback and talk to Mr. Ellison.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve moving forward.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so let me ask question two now, then we'll roll it in. Because this question wouldn't have, would have been a moot point if it had been no. So there were a few restaurants last year that reached the $2,500 cap. So I guess from a clarification standpoint, are we simply extending the program? Or are we basically gonna allow the ones that reach $2,500 to apply again? So basically, are you reallocating the $2,500 again for everybody? Or are we just leaving it at that cap? And you could take advantage if you hadn't previously taken advantage?
So, look, so for clarity, you're saying the cap extended across two seasons?
As opposed to two?
As opposed to restarting, resetting the clock, season one, season two.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
I, I would think that if we're gonna do it, that it has to be a new clock. Now, we could change that number. I'm okay with that. But to do the accounting, you can go back and go, well, you spent so many, when nobody told them, hey, if you spend it in year one, you're not gonna get anything.
Alderman Wesley, did you have a?
Well, I always thought it was 25 regardless. I didn't know we.
Alderman Sizmarsky, do you have an opinion?
Just make it for the whole season, that there's no?
Okay, so we're, we're in agreement that we're gonna start the clock again? And so they're entitled to the 2,500? Is that what everybody?
They need to use it though, don't they?
Yeah, well, yeah, they wouldn't just get a check, they would have to use it.
Proceeds.
Mayor, Mayor Police?
And just so, some of those businesses actually bought some tables and chairs. So it wasn't all rented. So I would anticipate the number being less this year. I mean.
Right, that's very possible. Absolutely, good, good point.
So we're talking about 2,500, 50/50. So they're spending 5,000, we're at 2,500 max, is what the motion is, correct?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the program again.
Second.
You're already, you're just amending it though.
Yeah, it's amended motion.
So.
You were the second one.
Yeah, because you added the 20, okay. Yeah, I disagree.
Right. Well, we didn't, okay.
Well, you were amending it, so I.
I see what you're saying, yep. No. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the amended motion. Roll call. Before we go.
Just to report a clarification for our minute taker. Could you repeat the amended motion that I was going on, Chairman Wilson?
You, oh, go ahead.
Do you have the, you understand?
That you're approving the 50/50 cost share for applicable costs to establish outdoor dining. And you would restart the clock, so everyone's entitled to $2,500 reimbursement. Yeah, maximum 2,500.
You're good, Arlene.
So restart the clock regardless of, so it's a new program, same terms, new program, regardless of last year.
Okay, so we're, we're good on that then? We have the motion, we have the second.
Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this was, I believe Alderman Wesley's question from a few minutes ago. Last year, we had waived the renewal fee on liquor licenses. You may recall except for GSP. And those liquor license holders categorized as supermarket-type establishments. So the question is, do we want to offer that relief again this year? Or go back to the normal fee schedule for all liquor license renewals for all categories this year?
What, Alderman Sorrentino?
I'd like to suggest that if we're gonna bring it back, let's bring it back at 50%. Give them a little leeway. Instead of none or all.
So instead of, so last year, we.
Waived it all.
We waived the whole fee. So this year, you're saying you want to only waive 50% of the fee?
Well, that's, would be my idea.
Okay. So is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
So do we have a second? Do we have a second? I'll second it.
What a guy.
So are there any questions? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So waiving the liquor license 50/50, or whatever, half the price, is that counted for everyone that has a liquor license in town?
Yes.
I just want to verify that.
Yes.
Everybody but the, Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Not the way he said it.
As I said, my understanding would be, would be for anybody except for the GSP and the supermarket-type establishments. So the ones that had it waived last year, it would be 50% this year where the GSP, those would be the full price as they were last year anyways.
I.
Bye.
Mr., hang on a second. Mr. Bond, do you want to?
Yeah, and the reason for that, if you recall, because the grocery stores that have that type of license jewel, they were having robust sales in both food and liquor. So it really didn't impact them. And that was the reason last year you guys decided to bifurcate it. And it's very clear because we have the licensed classifications. And what we did last year is, we did it for those licensed classifications exclusive of that, for the grocery stores. So the whole, the whole purpose of it is to provide some relief and some, and by doing that, the grocery stores really don't need it and didn't need it back then either.
Alderman Wesley, you had a follow up?
So what happens with the 7-Elevens and all that? I mean, I, I just don't, I thought last year, and I swear, maybe I missed it, but I thought we waived it citywide.
Mr. Wilson, do you want to?
Yeah, so the GS is the gas station license, and they paid their regular renewal fee. I mean, any new liquor license applicant would have to pay the new fee. So that, that hasn't changed. There's no consideration for that. But, yeah, last year, the gas station and the PU, which is like Attorney Bond said, you know, jewel target, whatever, they, they paid the full freight last year as well.
Okay. Mayor Police, you have a question?
Just so we're clear, the motion, that was the motion, right, Pat? We're good on the motion?
Same as last year.
Okay.
50%.
50%.
50, yeah, I don't know, 50%.
Same program.
Same program at 50%.
Instead of 100%.
We could get those for next week.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Roll, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Reason for no is I'd rather see it say the same if we're doing the other program, no.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
So we're, were you a no?
I just thought if we're doing the first one, we might as well do the second one the same way. But that's, no.
Three yes.
So is that a yes or a no?
No.
No, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Wilson, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, since March, we have not done any assessing of penalties on the water utility bills and/or shut offs. The last shut offs we did was actually two days before, you know, the world ended. I think it was, so today's the 11th. Actually, it was a year ago today was the last time we did water shut offs here in Wooddale. So at some point, you know, we're gonna need to get back to that. You know, it's interesting looking at the reports, the number of people that are behind is about the same as it was a year ago. Some of the names are exactly the same, just the balances are a little bit bigger nowadays. So what a few towns have done that have been on hiatus for a long time, instead of just jumping straight back in, they've sent a letter out saying, hey, you know, next month or in two months, we're gonna start our regular process back up again. You know, if you're having trouble, if you're behind, you know, please reach out. You know, try to, try to catch up, try to get something set up. So instead of just sending people a letter that says, oh, you have 21 days to catch up on, you know, whatever's happened in your life for the last year, we give them, you know, six weeks or a month heads up, kind of try to start easing back into that, which would put that program back into place, kind of effectively starting May 1, would start the quote-unquote "normal," return to normal per the code, application of penalties and water shut offs.
Mayor Police, do you have a question?
Yeah, Brad, so you said some of those numbers are getting larger. Are you trying to tell us that some people are just not paying at all for the past year? Or, or their number, because they haven't been fined, so there's been no penalties. There's been no shut off. But they've been paying a percentage? Or are we getting a large number of those repeat offenders doing absolutely nothing?
Mr. Wilson?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the people whose names we readily recognize on the list, they figured out that we weren't gonna do anything to them. So, yeah, some haven't paid in 10 months. You know, and they only paid three times the year before that. So there's a few people that have called and, you know, were upfront with us. And, you know, we've worked with them and whatnot. But it, it seems to be that the people that have figured out that there's no, no downside to that pain have basically taken advantage of that versus, you know, the people that are just kind of ongoing, so.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, Brad, with all those people, how many actually reached out to you to start payment plans? Or are they not even making payment plans?
Mr. Wilson?
You know, I have an exact number, but I think we, you may recall, we also did the payment plans for businesses. I think we had one business reach out in the last year for a payment plan. And we probably had maybe 20 to 30 residents reach out. And a lot of those, we said, hey, we're not doing penalties right now. So it's kind of keep us posted on, on your progress. So, yeah, maybe, maybe 20 to 30 people have reached out in the last few months last year. So just, we'll just say there's a multiple of 10 to 15x of those people that should be reaching out to us, but, but haven't yet, so.
Interesting. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to move ahead with the program as you outlined, with getting back online to.
I'll second that.
Is there any other question? No, there being none? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So my question is, it's pretty hard to make that determination to go ahead and come off when you got people that are making payment plan. So are you eliminating the, the people that are making payment plans? That their bill was so high that they still can't pay it? Or are we looking at, if they don't pay that bill off at a certain time, we're just gonna cut their water off? I just want to make sure. Because there are people making payment plans. So how should they suffer when you give them the deadlines? Say, you gotta pay this all upfront, or else we're cutting your water off? I just don't justify that. If someone, if someone's making payment.
Right, so our general policy was to work with, with the resident when they got behind. And if they were, they could come in and develop a payment plan. And as long as they were following the plan and in communication, most importantly, with the, the city, the water department, and the building department, and, and making an effort to pay, we, we've never shut them off. I mean, we're probably one of the most lenient communities that, at least that I know of. So I think we're just looking at getting back on schedule for those people who have, are, for lack of another term, gaming the system. Because no, they, they knew nobody was policing it anymore, so. Right, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wilson?
No, it's well said.
Thank you. So. So, roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, next, Mr. Wilson?
Sure, last one is, oh, sorry, two more. Last one is the dialeride fees. Again, beginning last March, we ceased charging for dialeride rides. That, again, was supposed to expire in February, we did speak with Mr. Bond, the intent, you know, was that once things were, again, you know, back to normal, or some, you know, semblance of reasonably normal, we would start charging again. We decided to hold off on that, especially now with the vaccines out, we felt it a little, had a little base to perhaps charge somebody $3 to go get their vaccine at one of the hospitals or something, so we, we held off on the dialeride fees again. Again, you know, need to get back to it at some point, but trying to do that once we got back to a more stable position, so just looking for a little guidance on that as well, I don't know if Mr. Bond has anything on that above what he stated before, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, this is a, I wanna say a moving target, but certainly, nobody has the crystal ball as to where it's going, and obviously, dialeride serves a purpose for some of the members of the population who, you know, might need it most, particularly to get the vaccine, the vaccination in other parts of it, so it seems to make sense.
Right, Mayor Police, you had a comment?
Yeah, a couple, actually, Brad, were you looking to restart this, what, in a few months? It sounds like you're waiting for the vaccines, like, May or June? And the other one, I'm just curious, since we weren't charging, did we give more ridership, or really not?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, for the first one, I mean, I would say, you know, probably no sooner than May, and then if you believe, you know, what the vaccine rollout's supposed to be looking like, they said, well, by the end of May, there should be enough for everybody, so maybe that puts it at June 1st. So I'd, I'd say May 1st or June 1st would probably be when we were looking, and for the ridership, I have to defer to Mr. Lang or Mr. Hastings, if they have any recollection on that.
Yeah, ridership is down from pre-pandemic times, just because we're doing essential trips only, doctor visits, grocery stores, things like that, we're not doing any extraneous trips.
Make a motion?
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make the motion to bring back at 50% of what was prior to COVID.
Uh, second?
Starting with.
Target date, what you have in mind, or I'd go with May 1st?
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there'd be an end date on the 50% as well?
End of the year?
Yeah, all right, we'll go with that, that'd be, so the motion would be 50% for the dialeride, bless you, and that 50% will start May 1st, and it'll go through December 31st, 2021.
Okay, we have a motion, I agree as a seconder, motion, we have a second. Alderman Eugene Wesley, you have a question?
Fresh my memory, how much is a dialeride now?
It's $3 for a single ride and $4.50, or $3 for the senior, I think it's $4.50 for non-senior, they're right, $4.50?
He's taking the $3 and cutting that in half?
One-way.
One-way?
One-way.
So a, a trip to the doctor would be $9, $6 or $9, right? Assuming they come back?
Yeah.
From the That's always the hope.
So $6 that we would pay, now we're going, only charge them $3?
Correct.
My, my opinion, I, I, I mean, if you're only looking at $3, I would just
Who's charging those 60? Half's better than nothing, and it's bringing people back up to what was a reality, and now is chaos. You got a motion and a second, call it.
Okay, roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, so you're last and final.
Yes, um, yeah, you may recall last, I believe it was last week, the mayor read a request from the Historical Society, asking for some additional funding, I believe it was for their roof?
And the windows?
Windows.
Windows.
Windows again?
Yeah, so I guess that's the last item, to see if any additional funding that the council would like to contribute above and beyond what we give them for their normal programming in the budget.
So what, they had a specific request, did, did they not?
For a barn roof.
Mayor Police, do you wanna?
So, really, they didn't have a specific request, but I know they were trying to work through the facade improvement program, but it wasn't quite, didn't quite work out the right way, and they're like, you know, we need some kind of COVID help. I did check with Gosha and the billing department, she said, if, if everything would have been proper, they probably would have, with their score, probably it would have been somewhere between $42 and $4,400, is what she told me.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you had a question?
So, my question is, since we didn't give them anything from last year's programs, because it was all canceled, right?
Did we, is that a fact, we did give them money last year? Mr. Wilson, correct?
We did give them their regular contribution last year.
Oh, I did not know that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good, I, I thought we, since they canceled programs, I thought they didn't take their money.
And it's in the budget to give them their money this year also, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so this is money over and above
Okay.
Uh, that money for earmarked for windows and other repairs, roof or, or whatever. And this has been an ongoing thing, my only concern is that it's almost kind of like a private enterprise, even though it's a nonprofit. I would like something to attach to the property, because it's like we're funding a business, repairing their business, I'd like to know that there's some way for the city to recoup some of that money, should the building be sold, or, or, or that be dissolved, the Historical Society got dissolved and sold off the assets. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just for those of you who weren't around in 1980, the city acquired the property in June 1980, and in 1992, they entered into an agreement with the Historical Society, there is a reverter clause in the, in the agreement, so there's no legal obligation in that agreement for the city to continually fund the operations, so it's not unusual when you make a contribution, you can put what's called a restricted contribution, or restricted donation, in other words, you can put whatever conditions you deem appropriate. If it ceases to be a museum, it reverts back to the city already, but if for some reason, there is some question as to, you know, what the use, or whether it's not being maintained to a, to the level that the city would like to see that, you could put conditions on that, that it would be a lien on the property, for whatever that dollar amount that you're giving them as this, as this contribution, you can't do it for the past contributions, but for this and moving forward, that conditions, it has to be used for the specific purpose that they requested, that it will become a lien on the property, and if it's not, then the money has to be repaid to the city, if it's not used for the purposes for which it was, was requested. Identify that, can be recorded against the property, so not only would you have the reverter clause, but you'd also have the right to recoup taxpayer funds if it's not being applied in the fashion that was intended.
So, I'll, I'll make the
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman Sorrentino.
I'd like to ask Alderman Wesley, you made a comment, and it made me wonder, you said, they dissolved all their programs, you know, why are we giving them money?
I was under the impression we didn't give them one of that, why I made it?
They, I don't think that they dissolved it as much as because COVID, they weren't able to hold them, because they came out of the people, so if, if it wasn't for COVID, they would have still held their programs and done all the things, they're active in the tree lighting, they're, right, the trick-or-treating, the hay rides, the haunted house, the stories, the, so they, they hold a bunch of events, mainly targeted towards younger kids and the history and, and stuff of the house, but given the COVID-19 pandemic, they were unable to hold those. Mayor Police, you had a comment, question?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, so even though we have the reverter clause, this is taxpayer money, and just have a little extra safeguard for the city, at some point, we can recoup. I, I, I agree. Whatever number it was.
All right, well, I'll, I'll make a motion, you were talking, it'd be, I'll make a motion to grant them $6,000, as long as, and, and the new stipulation is that we have the, the amended reverter and lien attachment to the property with the language to what, what happens with the disposition of the property, given whatever certain circumstances, what the trigger, what those triggers would be, that would be
Second.
part of the, so.
I was hoping that we could reduce it by 50%.
Well, literally
$2,000, that was a long way when you ain't doing nothing.
It's more like a savings account than, than, in, in past years, let's say, so, they have been good, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I just wanted to verify the way the motion, so
Okay.
They already gave the money for the vents, if they haven't for this, that's been approved, right?
Mr. Wilson?
So we giving additional $6,000 to them for repair, whatever, the roof, or what, I thought it was a barn roof, but maybe I didn't.
And the windows.
All right, I'm good, I just wanna make sure
Yeah, no. And, and we can make that right, it has to be used for repair of the building, right, there has to be, it would be used otherwise.
That's what I would like in there.
Or receipts for, do you want any of that? Labor or?
So, Mr. Bond, Mr. Do you heard that, okay, thank you.
He'll have it ready for us for next one.
All right, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Well, as long as we have assurances that we have our monies protected in what should be our property, I'll go with a yes, then.
Alderman Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Next items to be considered at future meetings, audit, March 25th, that's always exciting, investment policy, that's exciting also, April and May. Anything else anybody else would like to put on the agenda, there being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So good.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Very good, well, just in the future, when human life is on the table, don't hesitate to say yes, like you did for this Historical Society. That's all I have to say.